Welcome everyone to Elizabeth Town City Council Regular Meeting for June 3rd, 2024. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Bill Weis and if he can lead us in the indication, please.
Head of powerhead, please. Dear Father, dear God, as we here in this section meet and welcome to visit from City D10, if you please look over our first responders as they mourn for us today in City D10. Dear God, please hold them and pray for the military and taking care of us and the veterans that you celebrated last week. Thank you for such a beautiful day to have another day in the glory of your name.
If you would please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Happy Monday. We're going to start with the approval of minutes from May 31st, 2024. If I can get a motion in a second.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Judge Howard, we can start the first reading. Ordinance number 102024, what's the meaning of zoning matter 712 College Street Road? If I can get a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
This ordinance amends the official zoning classification for the property located at 712 College Street from urban residential limited, or R3, to high-density residential and neighborhood commercial, which is R6 NC2, to allow for uses such as commercial use in multi-family. The change was recommended by the Elizabeth Town Planning Commission, and with this reading will be approved by the Elizabeth Town City Council as it was found to be in agreement with the city's comprehensive plan. The full text of the ordinance can be found on the city's website or by contacting the city clerk's office. This is a first reading by summary.
Yes, I have a question. In the transit letter that we got from Ed, it indicates that much of the property is located in a floodplain. It says an application with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is pending to move the floodplain. What does that mean? I mean, is the entire property?
No, the entire site is not. But based on, excuse me, improvements that the city has made in the drainage area, they have applied to have the floodplain revised on their property to allow for some development. It's still impacted by the floodway.
It still would be, some of the property would be? So then they'd have to follow FEMA restrictions or regulations with the development of the property?
And our local regulations too. I mean, we have a one-foot free board out of the elevation, and then the structures will probably be out of whatever the minimum elevation is set. I don't know if they submitted just a conceptual plan or did any more with.
They submitted a preliminary subdivision plan with it, but they're working with Rita and the Army Corps on the floodplain.
Okay. But even outside of that property that might be moved, they still want to develop on what is still considered flood property? Or could have the potential for flooding?
No, they're proposing to move the floodplain outside of some of the property to make more of it developable. Not the entire, they're just proposing to move it to give them more developable land.
How would they do that?
Through the Army Corps of Engineers. You can move a floodplain if you provide them information and.
So just like what we've done on some other projects when we've done stormwater projects.
Like Winchester.
Once we do the project, then Rita's office can go in and file a loan mark, and they will come in and they will reevaluate the FEMA floodplain and see if, based on what we did work-wise, shifted where the water was going or improved that area, and sometimes they'll take it out. And we've had success doing that in three or four different places in the city.
Is that, are they, I mean, would they bring in dirt to build that area up potentially?
Possibly.
Under the city's ordinance, if they do that virgil, it's a two-for-one compensation. So for every one foot they raise the ground, they have to excavate and remove two feet. So that may be part of their process they go through with the corps and stuff.
But the corps will oversee all that and make sure it's done, so it doesn't end up coming back to the city that a bunch of houses are getting flooded.
Mayors? Takes us to ordinance number 112024, adopting budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
This is a first reading by summary. This ordinance adopts the budget for fiscal year 2425 as required by KRS Chapter 91A for the general operation of the city government. The budget contains total funds available of $149,931,941, and a total appropriations for expenditures equal to $119,723,702, with an estimated ending fund balance of $30,208,239. Again, the full text of the ordinance can be found on the city's website or by contacting the city clerk's office, and this is a first reading by summary.
Moving along to ordinance number 122024, changing the operation of all medicinal cannabis facilities. If I can get a motion in a second to read.
Motion to read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
Again, this is a first reading by summary. This ordinance determines it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the city of Elizabeth Town's residents and members of the public who visit, travel, or conduct business in the city of Elizabeth Town to prohibit all municipal cannabis businesses within the geographic boundaries of the city of Elizabeth Town. This ordinance does not prohibit the lawful use of medicinal cannabis by cardholders in the city of Elizabeth Town as provided in KRS Chapter 218B. Again, the full text of the ordinance can be found on the city's website or by contacting the city clerk's office. This is a first reading by summary.
So I know we're going to have some discussion on that, possible some amendment. Judge Howard, if you don't mind, can you go in depth on legality, what you've learned in figuring with KLC and reading legislation and explain to the council what our options are?
Yes, I can give you either 10 minutes or 10 hours.
10 minutes.
This is a heavily regulated by both statute and administrative regulation area of law. It's statutes that cover two sessions of the General Assembly. And so I'll kind of hit the highlights, and if you have specific questions as to areas, I'll try to answer those. Again, this area started out as an executive order for the governor of Kentucky. And then the 2023 General Assembly passed Senate Bill 47 that basically took that executive order and passed it into law. Based on that law, then the administrative regulations have been programated, and the legislature went back in session this year and have already amended the legislation that they passed in 2023. This particular legislation is modeled after other states. I think it's about 23 or 25 states have enacted this. Excuse me? For municipal or for recreation? But anyway, the Arizona kind of concept was used, I think, as the framework for what we did here in Kentucky. And so what it did is to define the qualifying medical conditions that an individual must have in order to qualify for a card or to be deemed a cardholder, okay? I'm not going to go through all of those medical conditions because they've already been amended once. A cardholder has to be a resident of Kentucky, cannot be convicted of a disqualifying felony offense, has to have a written certification from a medical practitioner, and then the card itself must be issued by the state. So there are various things that cardholders cannot do, such as operate vehicles while under the influence of this, that is still against the law, cannot be smoked anywhere, the cardholder cannot grow their own, which is kind of an interesting concept because some other states that have done this previously are having that debate now based on the cost of accessing the medical marijuana, whether or not someone should be allowed to grow their own. And vaping has been disallowed in public transportation, public places, and public accommodations. Okay? So it's kind of not everywhere, but restricted. The state law provides for local options. Every city and every county has local options. You can opt to prohibit all medical cannabis businesses. Kind of the first option. A option, not necessarily first, but one of the options. You can enact a resolution to put it on the ballot. You can, this can be put on the ballot by a petition process, by enough signatures on the petition. If the city, if a city takes no action, then the default is that medical marijuana would be allowed, okay? So that's kind of the various options that we take. Now, it kind of gets interesting from a legal perspective because you have counties that are making decisions and you have cities that are making decisions. So who goes first, who goes second, what happens if they do opposite? There's kind of, in fact, there was a discussion online about city attorneys this weekend about who needs to go first, cities or counties in that. The interesting kind of part of this is there are five types of medical marijuana businesses that can be permitted: cultivators, processors, producers, compliance businesses, and dispensaries. Now typically, what most people are interested in is dispensaries. Where can you go and buy? That's kind of the retail part of this process. It is the general consensus of city attorneys across the state and of KLC that the law is currently written, you opt in or opt out of all of those or none of those. In other words, you don't get to select.
One or the other.
Do dispensaries, but not cultivators, or processors, but not this. And that discussion occurred probably last fall, starting about, it's the way the legislation was interpreted. And although the General Assembly amended some of this law this year, we did not change that. So I think that's what, it's an opt-in or opt-out of all of it. The other part of this is the General Assembly basically told the cabinet to come up with a system of licenses for this. And so by administrative regulation, the cabinet has come up with license. And it's kind of interesting because other states that have traveled this road before had difficulties in authorizing too many dispensaries, okay? If y'all have too many dispensaries and the market can't support all of those dispensaries, then sometimes, apparently in other states, dispensaries have tried to find ways to sell their product. And so that led to some problems. So Kentucky is being very restrictive in the number of dispensaries. I think they've likely concluded it's easier to authorize more later than to reduce the ones that you have later, okay? And so they come up with an interesting system as to how to allocate the number of dispensaries. They have indicated that they will allocate 48 statewide, okay? And with the exception of Jefferson County and Fayette County, but all other counties have been divided into 11 regions, okay? And so what they propose is that they will authorize four dispensary licenses per region. For us, we're in the Lincoln Trail Ad District, I think, I know.
Seven.
Four, no.
In the ad district?
No, there's eight in the ad district. Then a red.
Yeah, it's about.
Green.
Oh, all right.
They've added more in this, so it's the Lincoln Trail Ad District plus a few others, okay? They're going to allocate four dispensary licenses. A county cannot receive more than one, okay? And it's not based on population. In order to remove any, I guess, criticism that it is somehow politically motivated as to who gets a license, if more than one license is requested in a county, then a lottery is held. And the Kentucky Lottery Corporation.
The Powerball.
I don't know how, I don't know if they've got a.
They don't even show it anymore.
A hat if they put everybody's number in, or what?
I'm sorry, is there a deadline for deciding whether or not we opt in for our one dispensary? That would be possible?
Well, what they did this year for the 24 statute is they moved up, originally in the 23 legislation, no licenses was going to be issued by the state until January 1st of 2025. And so that was kind of giving everybody time to do that. But they moved that up in the 24 legislation until July 1st of 2024, okay? They could issue licenses, okay? And as I understand it, what they were trying to do is to create a system where a product could be developed and available by January of '25. Now, they also have a statute that says that if a company or an individual seeks a license before January 1 of 2025, they are then at risk of whatever the local government units may do, okay? Some.
So before the local government opts in or out, if they get a license, they might lose their license if we opt it out?
Exactly. And so KLC is encouraging all of the cities, if possible, to make the decision by July 1, okay? But there is that protection in there because even if it's by a petition process, you may not know until November, okay? As to whether or not it would be allowed or not. So that is kind of, there's not, there are some restrictions on the cultivator and the processor and the producer license, but those typically aren't the ones that generate the most interest, so I'm not going to go over all those details.
So as far as this ordinance here, if we was to say yes, then that allows everything.
That allows a license for all five different types.
But that one license covers all five of them?
No.
Oh, I misunderstood you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So then there's going to be more than four.
Well, we're talking.
Okay, say it again.
Dispensary license.
Yeah, I know you said that.
There's only going to be one for all of Harden County. So for instance, if, I've used this in the past, discussed this, if West Point and Elizabeth Town were to authorize, okay, these businesses, and we had persons in both cities to file for an application for a dispensary license, okay? Then somehow the Kentucky Lottery Corporation would draw either West Point or Elizabeth Town out of the hat. We would have a 50-50 chance. And it could be that West Point would have the only license for Harden County.
How do the, are the cultivator licenses limited similarly?
You know, they are, and I would assume that if more applied than what they are allowing, that we would do. The regulations don't say it, but the assumption would be that they would use the same process.
So how many of those are available?
That's what I was going to say. I was thinking.
Those are statewide, okay?
So we could get a dispensary license to say, okay, you can buy the stuff from us, but then there'd be other licenses for somebody to.
Yeah, a tier one cultivator is 10 licenses, a tier two is four, a tier three is two. There are no tier four, and those cultivator licenses, you know, ones are the smallest square footage, four are the largest square footage.
And those numbers are for the whole state of that?
Yes. Processor license are 10, and they're not going to issue producer license at this time.
And what is a producer? What does that mean?
As I understand it, it is a combination of a cultivator and a processor, someone who does both.
Mixes it all together and comes up with the compound or something.
So we could, at the most, have one dispensary if we opt in. And I mean, given land prices around here, I don't know how many cultivators we would have with.
Well, it's a lot of money and pot, and it's going to be taxed.
Medicine is very different.
That's why I dig this pot. Using fancy words.
Okay. I don't see the harm in this. And I mean, I only got my email, I only got this today. So I read as much of the restriction of the KRS as I could, but no, this is some of the regulator. There's a board of 10, of eight doctors and two nurses that, like, govern the whole thing. It can't be near schools, it can't be advertised that well. And the bottom line is this was passed because sick people need this, and it's proven to help sick people. And so personally, I would like us to opt in, especially since this is one, I mean, there's 36 states that allow medicinal cannabis, and this is one more heavily regulated package of those states from what I looked at and have read.
Now, I would just, we cannot and do not prohibit the use of medicinal marijuana to any cardholder.
Well, when you said cardholder, so then I, as a patient, go to a physician, and physician says, yes, you qualify for the medicinal cannabis. So then he gives me a card, or he sends a card to the state, and they authorize it? Is that what you're saying?
The state has to authorize it, so there's a certain amount of.
So it's not just the doctor saying.
No, no, it's not the doctor handing these out. My memory is, I think it has to be a Kentucky doctor too. It's not an internet doctor.
The reason it has to go to the state, though, is to do somewhat of a background check.
Background check? On me or the doctor that authorized it? On me, okay. So they'll request medical records or something like that? Let me ask you.
No, I think more of a criminal.
Oh, okay.
Which you can't get if you have a family. People under your age, you have to have a caregiver to buy it for them and to prescribe and to get it to them. So it's.
It's almost like, I guess, when you go to your doctor to get your disability and to put in your card, get that card if you don't have a doctor.
Handicap.
Yeah. Well, is there any, is the city itself put itself at exposure for litigation if somebody, say, had the license and then they came and said, well, that's not fair. The state has legalized it in here, so we have an out. We aren't sitting on the edge waiting to be litigated against for not allowing it. I guess that's my question.
No, because the state law that allows this also allows local government to opt in or to opt out.
I know how attorneys are, they can still sue. You know that.
To file suit, you need pen and paper and 100 bucks. It's whether can you be successful, and that is not likely.
Not likely, okay.
And so the other places that you get it, I guess the problem is putting the burden on the patient to have to go get it somewhere else.
Yeah, they are going to be, apparently, in Lincoln Trail Ad District, four licenses for dispensaries. So they are starting out very restrictive, I think. Now, having said that, that seems to be the recommended practice, you know, for the other states that started out authorizing too many dispensaries that caused other issues. So kind of, I think the current school of thought is best practice is to start out small and then increase it if you need to later. It just seems odd to me that if more than one, and you have to go to a choice system who gets the license, it's not, it seems like we ought to have a weighted average in the lottery. You know, if we have 35,000 people, and West Point has 2,000, seems like we ought to have more chances to win, but that's not the case. It's just by random choice.
You know, for me, I understand the dispensal part, okay? To, since this is legalizing, that it is, you know, it's almost like saying, no, you can't have a pharmacy here to get your medication, which you need. So, but aside that is that that's not the only thing that by passing this and allowing this that you get the opportunity to have. I don't know that I have enough information to know about, can you regulate, can we police, can we monitor, and what's in place for the cultivators and the other parts that could come along with the passage of this? The weighted fact that we have the number of citizens we have in E-Town? Yeah, says that, you know, because I know that there are several here, and some have their card from Colorado before it was ever legal. You know, some landlords have discovered that. And, but to be able to administer and to control, and that basically is going to come back to us to enforce. It just is. That's going to be weighed on the police department or the others if it gets to illegal activity. And so I don't know enough about the regulations on the other part of that versus dispensing it. I think dispensing it is more controllable, but the problem is you don't get to choose here. You get it all.
Right, but they also put very, very limited restrictions on the tiers and the square feet that we have in fully E-Town District. And so it's, I mean, it's just as heavily regulated as this, again, I don't know if you have the KRS today, but there is a chapter cultivator and cultivator agent for municipal actions. It's KRS 218B, 105, and can just write off the very few numbers that cultivators and different levels that we can have.
Yeah, they seem to favor the small cultivators, at least in the beginning, which is, I guess, a little surprising to me because.
Well, I mean, if there's not demand, why allow large, I mean.
So the large-tier cultivators, there's only, there can only be 10 in the state? Is that correct?
The largest, zero, to start with.
But to the next level?
Yeah, well, no, that's a processor. There are 10 processors. Yeah, uh, well, no, that's a processor, there are ten processors, there are, there are ten tier one cultivators, and I could look it up and tell you what the square feet maximum is, there's ten tier one, four tier two, and two tier threes.
So you're looking at one in about every eight and a half counties?
Yeah, I, as I understand it, and attending way too many seminars on this, uh, that is a, it is very expensive to get into the cultivation business. That's why I was a little surprised that they didn't allow the bigger ones, some economies of scale, I thought may keep some people from coming, but maybe that's what they wanted to do, to keep the large, out-of-state, uh, companies that are in this business to allow for more local people to do it. I don't know, but it, it is, it's an indoor, uh, facility, and it, uh, because of that, it, it has a lot of, uh, requirements, uh, that, and investment. It's an expensive investment to come, to become a cultivator and a processor, okay? Uh, you know, a dis- a dispensary, it's not cheap because you have, you know, it, it's a storefront, it's a retail operation, but you have then security issues that you must address to be a dispensary that, you know, you don't have if you're, you know, selling clothing.
I know at one time out in California, because it's still unlawful under the federal government's eyes, that they couldn't take their money to the banks, because, uh, is that still, would that still be the case in this situation here, or is that still the case?
Well, tha- that is part of the legal issue, is that under federal law, uh, marijuana, whether it's recreational or medical, is illegal, okay? Now, they are, the federal government is going through the process now to reclassify it, it's currently classified as a Schedule One drug, for those of us in the, kind of the drug business. Uh, I did that, I did that for a long time, uh, as a judge and prosecutor, and they're proposing to reschedule it, I think, as a three or a four.
Four, I think I read four.
Uh, which is probably, frankly, more appropriate, uh, that it be rescheduled. Now, again, I don't know, some, we had, Lincoln Trail Ad had a seminar with the, the czar from the state that was down here, I forget his name, he did a really good job speaking to all these issues, and that, because local governments can charge a regulatory fee, okay? Uh, the concern that was expressed, that was just probably three or four weeks ago that we had that, is, well, how do you enforce a regulatory fee if it is a cash business? Uh, and that is an issue, it still has to be worked on, uh, there's, it seems to be a distinction between whether federal banks are still prohibited, uh, from accepting the proceeds from this business, uh, whether FDIC, uh, federal banks are, so then you kind of drop down to state banks, okay? Uh, that would not be, and then, but there is a question as to whether, if you are FDIC insured, which is a federal program, whether you still have those issues. And again, that's, other states, uh, apparently have been able to work through these issues, uh, some states, it's still a cash business.
So you all need to advise us as a council, like you would like for us to proceed?
I personally think that there's still too many questions, and then I read this article put out by Mayo Clinic, and yes, there have been studies, and a lot of the studies deal with people who have cancer, that it does help with the nausea and being ill, but, and I think, uh, what'd I read, epilepsy, maybe? Is that another one? Yeah. But, I mean, outside of that, there's not much more information as to what it does.
Well, the, the, the medical aspect of it, I mean, it's already, that was already, I mean, it's, it's proven to help people.
Right.
I mean, with cancer, with epilepsy, with other issues, um, that's not really for us, I mean, I mean, there's a whole board of doctors created by these regulations to, um, who are supposed to be, who are licensed in what medicinal cannabis does and doesn't help, um, and what will be permitted and won't be permitted, I guess it's just, I mean, if we, I would like to suggest that we opt in, um, because I don't think one dispensary and some very expensive startup cultivator, which may not even end up being in this county, um, will be, I think it will be more detrimental to the people who need it, if it's not allowed to be here. We can do hard things, we, we currently, we are doing a lot of hard things right now, and I, I think we can probably figure it out, I think, in our city and our resource.
If, um, a- as far as what other cities in, in Hardin County are doing, do, do we know what you're suggesting?
Preliminary information that I've gotten, just speaking to officials from the county, they feel like they are going to opt in, from what I understand, and nothing's final that I'm aware of. Is that what you're hearing, too? You're hearing the other side of that?
No, I thought it was an opt-out.
Last time I talked to.
That's fluid.
But, but Fine Grove is in.
What's Fine Grove?
I think Radcliffe talked about being out. That was just, that was what I heard a few weeks back, so don't owe me to any of that, but.
I talked to Barks Town today, and they haven't even started talking about it.
Just, if everybody, I'm just saying, if everybody was opting out, then the county opted out, but are, aren't we saying that there's one allowed in each county?
No more than one.
No.
No more than one.
No more than.
We might not even get one.
Unless we're gonna.
That's it, we may not even get one.
It may not even be a count.
I mean, we could opt in, and there's the one in we could trail somewhere else, or the four, and we could trail somewhere else.
I'm, I'm, I'll tell you all my opinion, and you all vote and I don't. My opinion was, if this was gonna be, at, at least at the early stages, if this was gonna be available at every five-star and on every corner, I was not a fan. I am a fan of medicinal marijuana, if it treats people that are.
Sure.
Terminal cancer, epilepsy, makes their life a little bit better for what they have here, then I'm all for it. But if it was gonna be available to be on every corner of the city, I was out. But with the restriction that it could possibly only be one place, softens my stance somewhat.
And those are by administrative reps, okay, which means.
But really, this is really stronger than, or alcohol, when we're only restricted to six or seven liquor stores, or X and thirteen, so if we're looking at four, then we probably not even here.
Man, Chief, have you given us any thought as far as problems that you foresee if we opt in? And if we opt in, doesn't necessarily mean it's coming to E-Town.
We had problems, we had problems when we had hemp here, so to think that we're not gonna have some type of problem would be extremely naive, in my opinion. Now, does that mean we opt out? You know, I, obviously, that's a difficult decision for you all to make, but to think we would have no problems just because of the state, forgive me if I don't know a lot of cockroaches, the state's gonna get this right.
I, I don't think there's a lot of problems, I just, I think it's my fault, you guys.
But, we, we will enforce it as instructed with, between our city attorney and the lead cities, uh, but, you know, I just think it's gonna be, we have problems with stolen robbing from Walgreens and black market for everything. So, will this bring problems? It will bring some problems, but we are, we already have problems. I just don't know what it'll look like with the amount of regulatory enforcement that's planned. We may not even be a part of that. I know when hemp first came back into existence in Kentucky, uh, state police and the agriculture department had the lead on all that, and I know from my, my previous career, and it was a rollercoaster ride of regulatory.
Well, and if you'll recall, we, we lobbied hard against that and lost.
Yeah, and it was.
And it's kind of fell on its face.
I think my, my biggest fear is looking back at the failures of what hemp was, uh, here locally and across the state, and are we looking at that? I can tell you on a personal level that, uh, I, my mother has Parkinson's, and it's been shown to reduce that, so I agree with Julia a hundred percent. Medicinally, in a non-smoked form, it has shown that it has benefits, I don't think that's the issue at hand, I think that issue's been settled, and in non-smoked forms.
I agree.
Uh, so I, I think that the issue becomes, do you want to invite that type of business to your jurisdiction, and, and, Ken, Judge brings up a great point, is the money, is what we have seen from the law enforcement side, in states that have not allowed the banks to take that money, we're seeing, off-duty law enforcement provide security for these dispensaries, and then you have cartels coming in robbing the, the dispensaries because it's such a cash cow, so, yeah, I, I think it's, it sets up where there's, there's still, since it's one, there's a lot of questions that might need to be answered, um, but I don't know that it's going to bring any more problems than what we saw with the hemp or liquor stores.
Imagine where you and Berks and I have come from twenty-five years ago, to making a statement about off-duty police officers guarding dispensaries.
Yeah, I, I know a retired police officer from the state that moved to Colorado to begin a dispensary. There's that much money, and he spent his career here enforcing it, and then out there, now he's in a new career dispensing it. So, it's, it's kind of unchartered waters, especially for us, uh, but I do, I think it's, it's worthy of discussing, and whether you want to hear it, is, I wouldn't look at it as, you're gonna have, if it is genuinely one, I agree with the mayor, that it does soften the stance of what it would look like, but I, I would not believe the, the people who would give you the indication it's not gonna be problematic in some, for some of them.
With my comment, the only thing that scares me is there's a start to everything, and so if you're, they're successful in, in getting this in the different communities, then how far do they take it, and what's next? I mean, is there more legislation coming that ups those numbers? That's, that's the only thing that scares me.
But it still remains to be medicinal, and it still remains to be heavily, like, regulated as to who gets it and who can dispense it, and how it's, there's even limits on how, you can only keep, like, ten days' supply in your home, you can only have a certain amount at a certain time, so you can't go by six months worth of medicinal marijuana and start handing it out in corners. Um, I mean, there, there's very, very strict, tough restrictions on quantities and amounts and how much you have a month, and if your car is revoked, you have to get it back, if your car is, you have to, the car owner has to report to the state on a regular basis, the caregiver has to be named and designated, you can't just say, hey, my eighteen-year-old needs, or my seventeen-year-old needs medicinal marijuana, and then they keep it, um, there's, yes, there will be problems, I, I totally recognize that, everything brings its own problems, alcohol brings its problems. Um, but I think the, this wouldn't have passed the state if there were been, would, if you look at the majority of our legislator, legislature, this wouldn't have passed the state if there wasn't some hard proof that it helps people, and it's needed in a state.
Yeah, I don't think that's even up for debate.
And so I would hate to put a burden on a caregiver or a patient to, I mean, if we only have one, we only have one, we may have zero, um, but to have to go out of the county or to have to go, um, you know, if it's to West Point, have to go up to West Point here.
It's still in Hardin County.
Still in Hardin County.
Still Hardin.
The mayor's sorority, it's still in Hardin County.
Remember that, sorority, I said that, but, um, anyway, I would hate to put that burden on a patient or a caregiver.
Well, let me just also let you know, because in talking with other city attorneys, I mean, frankly, cities are all over the map on this, okay? Uh, there are some cities that are planning to, since it's a lottery system, to see if you get it, uh, they're taking the position of, we're gonna wait and see, we'll, we'll let you get a year under your belt, and then maybe we'll opt in, we'll see.
Well, what was the July first deadline you talked about?
Well, that is when the state is gonna start issuing licenses, okay, for all five of the businesses. So, under the theory that they need time to be prepared to implement this January one. Now, having never grown marijuana, I, there's some discussion that January one is real because you, you cannot bring marijuana in from another state, it has to be grown here, okay? Uh, whether or not even starting July one, they can build these cultivating centers, uh, I know there's one down in Bowling Green that's trying to get started, I mean, if you've got, you know, a warehouse that's, has nothing in it, then you may be able to get started pretty soon. Uh, but January one is probably optimistic, I think, most people in this industry would say. But some cities are, uh, just gonna wait and see, because, again, it's a, it's not a population-based decision, it is a lottery decision.
We're taking your all's lead, we'll do whatever you tell us to.
I don't have a lead yet, for a second, because I, I'm not debating whether we need to do dispensing, it's the other part that bothers me, because I'm not comfortable enough with, with how that's regulated.
Well, is it, so if there's not a hard deadline.
January one twenty-five is a hard deadline.
That's the hard deadline, July one is not a hard deadline. So, I mean, personally, I'm gonna be at KLC thing this week, Wednesday and Thursday, and Morgan with KLC is having a session on this.
Right.
Would it be possible to table this and talk to KLC more and do more research?
I mean, we don't have to read it, do a second reading.
Yeah, we just had a first reading today, so. Did we? Read it?
Well, it's a second reading, I don't want some of it hanging out, but I'll need a second reading, it's a second reading, it's a second reading. So, what would be the procedure then?
Well, the procedure, I mean, what we would typically do is, whenever your next regular session, in two weeks, I assume, is when it would be put on for second reading and adoption.
June seventeen.
So it could be approved, tabled, or disapproved at that date.
And your next meeting, you're gonna read it?
Yeah, yes, yeah, it could be denied, but there is no reading, which is a disapproved.
Just never read it.
It can be amended.
It, but I think if you, if we were going to put this in motion, there's a lot more details need to be amended than just amended to say it's allowed, right?
Oh, yes, the drafting to say, to opt out is two percent of what the drafting is to opt in. Because the af, the drafting to opt in takes, you know, we've got to have planning and zoning, and those types of things, uh, locational, with a manner, time, and place, uh, is permitted.
Good point.
And so we could have, you know, we, we need to have a comprehensive.
So we don't have a zoning classification for a dispenser, okay. I, I was in my notes, I forgot to ask that, he brought that up. But you're saying that KLC is suggesting that we opt out?
No, 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 they're just saying opt in, they're recommending.
In or out, okay.
By, by July one.
One, okay.
Now, and that is, because there's some legal concern that if you don't tell the public what you're gonna do by July one, and somebody makes an investment not knowing, the statute says they're at their own risk, okay?
Well, they would be anyway if they don't have any clue which.
Yeah.
County that one license would go to out of twelve.
That is, that is true.
They're, they're always, they're always a pretty big dice to know what.
Yeah, well, and frankly, it's the, it's the cultivators that are, are, is I can understand from talking to other city attorneys, because they have cultivators who have already approached their cities, saying, we're gonna make an investment, because we wanna be a cultivator, and we think that it would be advantageous for us to get a license, we need you to opt in, and we need the state to give us a license, and we think if we can tell the state that we can be ready by January one, that gives us a better chance of getting a license. And again, that's their, uh, that's their business risk that they're taking, and that's fine, uh, there's just some concern that by being silent, somebody's gonna claim that they were misled.
So I guess my question to you all would be, what questions do you all have to make you comfortable one way or the other, that we need to find out for you all to discuss? So would you like to send that to us later? So would you like to send that to us later?
Well, I, I would probably also wanna know, I mean, I know we knocked tattoo parlors out of downtown. I would like to know where that dispensary's gonna be, where, I don't want it in a...
Pine Valley.
Pine Valley, yeah. Well, you know what? If you remember the story, when California first started this, the Girl Scouts in California made more money than they had ever made standing outside of the dispensaries, to people buying Girl Scout cookies. That's the truth.
I mean, a lot of it.
So I think that's important, to know where we're gonna allow it, and then for cultivation the same way. Wouldn't that be zoned?
It's still the way we're planning, so the locations and the zoning would have an effect.
Yeah, we have to amend the zoning ordinance.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You can have a staff-level recommendation, but to have a definitive decision, we are probably a couple of months away from that.
Same way with cultivating, where you're gonna cultivate it, would that require...
You have to identify time, place, and manner.
Right.
Of all five businesses.
No, no, a hundred pounds.
Because they cannot opt in to just one.
Right. So you'd have to encourage all five of them.
Can you cultivate and put solar panels on the same piece of property? Just asking, I'm sorry.
Well, since, since you have to cultivate indoors, I would think it would be tough to put solar panels indoors.
So, let's do this. Obviously, we're not taking a vote on it anymore.
Yes, no.
Let's, you all submit questions to Jessica, and we'll research and find out the answers for you, and reconvene when appropriate, and discuss again, and find a path up of that.
Well, and then Chair Morgan, if y'all are gonna be in Lexington this week, I can share a line or something.
E-Town Morgan.
Yeah, I'm gonna be there, fact of our receipt of slides.
Okay, thank you.
Good job, Councilor.
Ready the water.
Municipal order number twenty-seven twenty-two four, accepting bid for wastewater chemical supplies, if I can get a motion.
Motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Ah, motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
There's no marijuana in these supplies, right?
No cannabis.
Gummies.
Gummies.
Do we get gummies out of this too?
Oh, geez.
So that's what everybody comes back with, is gummies.
We have several of these, and I'm gonna read the first one in full, and then probably summarize the rest of them in the interest of time. At a regular meeting of the City Council of Elizabetown held, held on the date set out below, after first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the city prepared bid documents and received public bids on May twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four for wastewater chemical supplies. Now be it ordered that the City of Elizabetown accept the following bid for wastewater chemical supplies, this would be contract number sixteen of this year. Sitco water chlorine in the amount of a hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents per hundred pounds, sulfur dioxide in the amount of sixty-two dollars and fifty cents per hundred pounds, there is no delivery charge. Be it further ordered that the mayor of the city endorse its designate, hereby authorize and direct it to take all steps necessary to perfect this, to perfect this order, including but not limited to signing contracts and obtaining the necessary permits, read, adopted, and approved the third day of June.
Corey, do we know what the difference is for this year's bid versus last year?
Uh, yes, for chlorine, the, it's, hold it right now. Um, except for chlorine, the current bid is for a hundred and seventeen, and, uh, last year it was a hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Okay.
And then for sulfur dioxide, the bid is a sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, and last year was seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
Okay, damn, that's good.
Wow, that's amazing, okay.
Yeah, doesn't usually happen, but sometimes we get lucky.
So hopefully we buy more of the sulfur than we do the other...
We actually buy, we actually buy less of it, but with the amount of saving for it, it actually adds up.
Okay, thanks.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, municipal order twenty-eight, twenty-two four, accepting bid for sale three twenty-five Helm Street, motion and second to read, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Judge Taylor.
Any objection to a summary reading?
No.
Now be it ordered that the City of Elizabetown accept the bid proposal from AR Props LLC and Lawrence Street Holdings LLC for the sale of approximately point one-three-two acres at three twenty-five Helm Street for five thousand dollars. Be it further ordered, the city conveys the property, convey the property to AR Props LLC and Lawrence Street Holding LLC for development purposes, free of all liens, but retain drainage and utility easements on the lot for the protection of the public infrastructure facilities. Be it further ordered that the mayor is authorized to sign any all agreements, contracts, settlement statements, deeds, subdivision flats, or other documents to complete this property transfer, and to take all other steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopted, and approved the third day of June.
Judge.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, well. Municipal order twenty-nine twenty-two four, accepting bid for the sale of one ninety Parkway Drive, if I can get a motion and second to read.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Judge Taylor.
By summary, now be it ordered that the city accept the bid from Larry and Linda Phillips for the sale of property at one ninety Parkway Drive, for the purchaser to pay all transfer costs, including but not limited to deed preparation and recording. Be it further ordered, the city convey the property to Larry and Linda Phillips, free from all liens, to enable the further development of the Parkway Business Center. Be it further ordered that the mayor of the city is authorized to sign all agreements, contracts, settlements, statements, deeds, subdivision flats, and other documents to complete this property transfer, and to take all other steps necessary to perfect this order. Uh, and I would note that this was publicly advertised, and only, this is the only bid that was received, and I recall correctly, I think the Phillips donated this property to the city, or right of way to the city years ago, and we're now transferring it back to them for their use.
Any discussion on the Larry Phillips's property?
We'd like to thank him for letting us share in it.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We probably didn't mow it, did we, Ed? I was gonna say, he said that, I thought, I bet you we didn't get to mow it.
Municipal order number thirty-two twenty-two four, reapportment of Casey McCrary to the Planning Commission, if I can get a motion and second to read.
Can we discuss? No, I'm joking. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Judge Taylor.
Whereas the mayor of the city, as provided in CARES chapter one hundred, wishes to reappoint Casey McCrary to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on June twentieth of two thousand twenty-eight. Now be it ordered by the City Council, that Casey McCrary is approved for reapportment to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on June twentieth of two thousand twenty-eight. Now it's further ordered that the mayor endorse his designate, is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order. Uh, this municipal order was read, adopted, and approved the third day of June.
Motion and second to adopt.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Municipal order thirty-one twenty-two four, reapportment of Kyle Sewerett to the Planning Commission, if I can get a motion and second to read.
Please, question.
She didn't go with the one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Judge Taylor.
Whereas the mayor of the city, as provided in CARES chapter one hundred, wishes to reappoint Kyle Sewerett to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on June twentieth of two thousand twenty-eight. Now be it ordered by the City Council, that Kyle Sewerett is approved for reapportment to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on June twentieth of two thousand twenty-eight. Be it further ordered that the mayor endorse his designate, is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopted, and approved the third day of June.
Motion and second to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. I will say both about Casey and Kyle, and Marty and Julia, most of the Planning Commission meetings, they do an exceptional job, in my opinion. It's very time-consuming to be on the Planning Commission, and a lot of times you're making people mad that you are neighbors and friends with, and sometimes even relatives, because they don't agree with how you end up ruling. And the pay's not great, and they're willing to, they're willing to get out there and serve their community and do the things that they do, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of our boards, especially the Planning Commission, for, for what they do, because it's not always rewarding for friendships and, and everything else, to make some tough decisions that is in the best interest of the city and not being elected officially.
It's a complicated one.
It's very...
They take it seriously, which is nice.
They do. So I do wanna make sure that we can let them know how much we appreciate it. City Council information items, next meeting will be June fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and that is all I have. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
We don't have a minute.
We are. Any further comments? Closed meeting pursuant to CARES six-one point eight-one zero-one, to conduct deliberation on future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, and to discuss specific economic development proposals, if I can get a motion and second, please.
So moved.
First.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and we will not have any action coming up.